To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
O'Gallup.
Here.
Summers.
Sager.
Moran.
Rice.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Premier.
Fannafield.
Fritz.
Gould.
Here.
Militello.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Vizalone.
Here.
Winfrey.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Bailey Perry.
Here.
Ballinger.
Here.
Markham.
Here.
Hart.
Chuminello.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Perry.
Here.
Prilitis.
Here.
And Nusis.
Here.
Okay.
There's no minutes to approve. In the old business, turn forward. Turn on the new business. We've got discussion, county benefit plan. Mr. Tidwell will go over this. And the reason I've kind of put this on is because the executive committee, he has heard a presentation from Aon about how to approach perhaps health insurance going forward. Of course, our biggest challenge is to keep a program that's a sustainable program, which requires probably some change over time, probably requires different types of participation by the employees. And Aon did come out with some recommendations to the full board, which would kind of change things a little bit, certainly not new, but new to this county perhaps, such as health savings accounts and so forth. So I'm going to hand it over to Bruce. He can kind of go through the various plans that were recommended by Aon and which I do believe we've taken to the negotiating table also. But since I was getting questions from board members who didn't seem to be aware of what the plans were, I thought this would bring everybody up to speed. Okay? Bruce?
Thank you, Jim. Good morning. As Jim said, Aon, our consultant at Hewitt, did present recommendations to the executive committee. They would have done here today, Stephanie. However, she lives in the far north suburbs and she has five feet of water in her basement. She can't get out of the suburbs. So she could not make it today. But we do have the presentation and I do have Mark Bennett and Michael Cusuarra from Lanier and Mutian, who are chief negotiators, and they will assist in going over what we presented to Apsme. So basically, this is the health plan that Aon, the initial proposal that Aon proposed. Again, it's some of the same, the same, but then introducing new health savings account. But I'm going to have Mark speak first to some of the negotiating and where we're at because I know the committee at the whole maybe has not heard that yet. So we'll go ahead and have Mark come and talk and guess the speaker is on.
Sit up here. No, I don't think that one's working.
The podium's not working.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you, Bruce. All right. I don't know, I think most of you probably remember me from the last round of negotiations three years ago, but we're back to the table again.
We do have some new people there, Mark. So introduce yourself.
Okay. All right. My name is Mark Bennett. I'm a partner with the law firm of Lanier Mutian. We are a firm that represents solely employers in labor and employment law. We've been around since 1945. We've got about 45 attorneys and this is all we do is collective bargaining and advising on employee litigation and things of that sort. I've been with the firm for 20 years. I've been a partner there for over 15. Michael, I think you've been, he's been with the firm for two or three years. He came from the Cook County State's Attorney's Office to our firm. We have been representing the county in labor negotiations, I think, for a little over five years. We came in during the middle of the last round of collective bargaining with Apsme and we were there at the end and through the strike and it got us the deal the last time. So we've come back again. This time around, the contract expired on November 30th of last year. We started negotiations shortly before the contract expired, but you know, as is often the case, they tend to go on a little longer than you hope. So far, we've had seven different sessions with Apsme and our next one is scheduled for next Monday. And you know, just a little overview about how bargaining works because Apsme is the elected bargaining representative of this bargaining unit of employees here with Will County. We are obligated by law to work with Apsme and negotiate with them over all hours, wages and terms and conditions of employment of the employees in the bargaining unit, which means that we can't just dictate how much we're going to pay them. We can't just dictate what the insurance is. We can't dictate their hours. We can't dictate the other terms and conditions of employment. We actually have to sit down with the union and negotiate over all those terms and try to reach agreement. By negotiating, we have to negotiate in good faith, which means we have to sit down with them at reasonable times and with the good faith effort or belief to reach an agreement with them. So that involves exchanging proposals and trying to convince them, as they are trying to convince us, that the proposals that we are exchanging are the more reasonable proposals and try to persuade them to agree to our position. So because this is a public meeting, there's a lot of, you know, we can't get into a lot of detail, but what I will tell you is where we are now typically in bargaining, you start with the non-economic issues because those are oftentimes easier to resolve and also provide the opportunity for us to develop a good working relationship across the table and trust so that when we start handling the more difficult economic issues, they're easier to resolve. In this case, because the bargaining or the last contract didn't finish up until the end of 2013, there really weren't that many language changes that either side came to the table with because the contract really quite frankly wasn't that old and most of the language issues had been resolved in the last round of negotiations. That's not to say that there weren't any or that there still aren't a couple more difficult issues out there, but for the most part, we got through the non-economic issues a little more quickly than we normally would, which led us then to the economic issues. Apsme made their proposal first and that was back, I think, in early May or late April. I can't remember exactly when it was. And their initial proposal was just a brief overview. They wanted 5% a year in wage increases for a four-year contract. On the health insurance, they wanted to maintain the status quo with respect to all the benefits, but they wanted to actually reduce their contribution, their monthly contribution by 2% because the way the health insurance plan is designed now, the employees currently are in the aggregate paying 10% of the monthly premiums. They had proposed to reduce that from the 10% down to 8%. They also proposed an additional week of vacation, additional personal days, and a few other economic enhancements as well. We presented our first, or our initial economic proposal on June 14th and our initial proposal was no wage increases for a four-year term of a collective bargaining agreement. And then we also gave them our initial health insurance proposal. With respect to all other economics that are currently in the collective bargaining agreement, our proposal was the status quo, meaning we weren't seeking any other changes or increases or decreases in any other wages or other terms in the contract with respect to economics. So I think that the focus today was going to be on what our initial health insurance proposal was. And you know, the health insurance is obviously a very high-cost item in the county's budget and so we are looking for ways to try to control the cost of the health insurance. The last round of negotiations were very difficult because of what the county was attempting to do and ultimately was successful in doing with respect to the health insurance because prior to this, or prior to the last round of negotiations, the employees were paying a percentage of their salaries towards health insurance rather than a percentage of the premium. And what happened was over time, because salaries went up less than health insurance cost, the employees were paying less and less towards the overall cost of health insurance. And ultimately, by the time we sought the change in the last round of negotiations, I believe they were paying around 5% of the cost of the premium towards health insurance. So our goal in the last round of negotiations was to switch it from a percentage of salary to a percentage of the actual premium so that as our costs went up, the employees' costs went up. But not to say that we were looking to increase the cost to the employees. We also instituted a wellness program for the first time because we thought that with an effective wellness program and the fact that the employees now had some skin in the game or were now invested in the cost of the health insurance, that we could actually help control how much the health insurance costs went up so that the employees would not be hit with bigger increases as time went on. This round of negotiations, we're still looking for the employees to pay a percentage of their premium contributions. We are looking to increase that, as we'll explain here in a minute, but we're also proposing adding a third health insurance plan to the mix because right now the employees have the option of a PPO and an HMO and we're also going, proposing the addition of an HSA, which we'll get into shortly.
Can I mention one other thing about the current? Bruce, maybe you can address the, there are tiers to contributions, correct?
Yes, there are.
So the reason I mention this is that lower-paid employees pay less than higher-paid employees. We were sensitive to that and as an average in dollars, how much do our average employees pay for health insurance?
Well.
$100 a month?
Right.
$50 a month?
Yeah.
It goes by tier, but.
It goes by tier. And so we have salary bands. We have four salary bands and it goes from like 30, $33,000 to you know, little $10,000 more. So there's four bands and the lower your salary is in those bands, the lesser premium is going to be. So in the aggregate, what it works out to be is 10% of the premium overall. So the lower-paid employees will pay less than 10%. Mid-paid employees will be right around 10% and the higher-paid employees would actually be a little higher than that, about 15%. So it is spread, so the aggregate is 10%.
Right. And if I remember correctly, right now, the employees who make under $31,000 a year are contributing about 4.6%, 4.7%.
That's correct.
Of their, or they're paying about 4.7%, 4.6% of the premium while those that are making over $77,000 are paying closer to 16% to 17% of the premium cost.
If you read out all those percentages, Bruce, what does that translate to dollars? Roughly.
So under $33,000, you're paying 75, 80 bucks a month?
Well, and we have a slide on this later, but currently for the PPO, for example, someone who's making under $31,000 and has selected only the employee coverage is paying $31 a month.
A month.
For health insurance.
Yes.
Someone making under $31,000 a year with family coverage is paying $93.56 a month for the health insurance.
And the reason I'm mentioning this, and I think the board should be aware of, is that, you know, first off, this isn't the county's money. This is the taxpayers' money. So it's the taxpayers that pay the freight here, the citizens. So when we talk about these percentages, you know, it can sound like, oh, that's a lot. But when you're paying $35 a month for your health insurance as an individual and $96 a month for a family, I got news for you. Our employees contribute less than any collar county in Illinois and maybe about the least, they pay about the least of any county in Illinois. So I mention this to you because, you know, the percentage whole thing can kind of knock it off whack. We're very reasonable and I think our employees have been treated extremely fairly when it comes to what they contribute to health insurance and the taxpayers who pay the freight, the citizens of this county, I doubt if many of them have the same deal.
Not even close.
No. So Jim, we actually did custom benchmarking with our peer counties and all of the collar counties and you are correct, we are currently much lower than what all of our peer counties are at.
Herb, did you want to comment?
Bruce, maybe you can answer this question. And I agree with both of you gentlemen, but you mentioned a wellness program and I guess my question is, I don't know if that's, I don't really see that as a big caveat or character. But, and what I wanted to know, Bruce, is there a certain amount of percentage of employees that have to participate in the wellness program to make it successful and are we at that threshold?
We have consistently been above the threshold.
Okay.
We are, our participation rate in the wellness plan is over 90%.
Oh.
That is the highest of any in the area.
Okay.
Most are in, well, the first year that they're introduced, most are in the 40%. We were over 90% the first year.
Wow.
But when you have an established plan, most companies are happy with 75%. That's a good participation rate.
Okay.
Ours has always been over 90.
Good.
Now, what the wellness plan is meant to do is not to reduce the health insurance cost, but is to contain them.
Correct.
Over time.
Mm-hmm.
And to make people aware and we have had tremendous success. We have a lot of success stories of people who have identified health issues early and have caught them. And literally, it has saved some people's lives.
Yeah.
And I know for some people, they find it a hassle. It's not that bad. Our plan was custom designed and negotiated with the union and actually Aon Hewitt assisted us with developing it. They're using that as a model for their other clients because we've been so successful.
And I thought it was a good program. I participate, my spouse do, but I didn't know how well it was doing across the county employees. So that's fantastic.
And we can do a separate presentation on the wellness program at another meeting.
And I do think it has had a positive effect in containing costs.
It has.
So.
Good.
I think it's working pretty well.
We've been beating trends.
Yeah, we've been beating trends. I think it's partly to the wellness program.
Yeah, we saw a bit.
Okay. So then, Mark, we'll get back to you, just fill in a few blanks there.
Okay. So this is a brief overview of the changes that we are actually seeking in our initial proposal. And again, I want to stress that this is our initial proposal with the union over the current health insurance plan. So with respect to the PPO that currently exists, our proposal is to increase, and we'll actually see the actual numbers and how this plays out later on, but this is a general overview, to increase the deductibles, $200 for employee only, $400 for family, move the co-insurance from the existing 90% to 80%, increase the out-of-pocket maximums by $1,000 for employee or $2,000 for family coverage, and increase the brand copays on prescriptions for $20 formulary and non-formulary brand. On the HMO plan design, we are proposing an inpatient hospital copay that be increased by 150, that outpatient hospital copay be increased by 100, and again, that the brand copays for formulary and non-formulary be increased by 20, and that the emergency room copay be increased by 100. And what we are also proposing, and this is what I mentioned earlier, is to add a third health insurance plan to the mix. This is what's called a, it's a plan, a qualified plan that allows you to set up a health savings account under the IRS regulations. And this is a high deductible health insurance plan and under our proposal, the deductibles that are required for the plan to qualify through the IRS regulations require that the deductible be $1,350 for employee only and $2,700 for employees with dependents. Employees who enroll in this medical plan are able to open a health savings account and contribute and save pre-tax dollars into that account. So they're able to take a deduction from their salary, move it into a health savings account, and that account is their own account. It's not something that's run by the county. That's their money, that's their account, and they can use that account, you know, it's designed to use, to help defray the health insurance cost by the increased deductibles in the plan. And as long as, you know, they can take the money out tax-free or pre-tax from their wages, any interest or money that that account earns is also tax-free under the IRS regulations. And as long as they use that money for qualified health costs, they can use that money without any tax consequences. Now, it is possible that they could also, because it is their money, they can use it for stuff other than health insurance, they're just going to have to pay a penalty for using that money for something other than health insurance. Also, this HSA, they don't have to use it or lose it by the end of the year, so if they put, you know, $1,500 in there during the course of the year and they don't spend any of that money, that money carries over to the next year, they can put another $1,500 so that they have $3,000 in there and it can continue to grow. If they leave the county employment for any reason, they can take that money with them. It's their money. And because it's a high deductible plan, it does provide for lower employee premium contributions. And you'll see the actual numbers again as we go through this, how this plays out in our proposal. All right. What we're also proposing, the change, is that for the PPO and the HMO plans, as we mentioned earlier, right now, the employees are paying in aggregate 10% of the cost of the premium. We are proposing in our initial proposal that for those two plans, they go up to 20% in the aggregate for the premium contributions, which is actually consistent with what some of the other collar counties employees are paying. But because the cost of the HSA plan is lower, not only for the employees, but also for the county, we're proposing that if somebody participates in the HSA plan, that that remain at the 10% aggregate for the premium contribution as a way to, you know, to keep the cost of that plan lower. And you'll, again, you'll see the actual numbers as we go through this. Also, the salary bands that Jim referenced earlier and that we talked about, right now, under the last contract, there was a, those salary bands increased, increased based on the CPIU from year to year. So right now, the salary band numbers are all, they're very weird numbers. So we thought it'd just be easier to, one, our proposal is not to have the salary bands increased, but they remain stable through the life of the contract and then we round those numbers up so that, that was the other component. And I already touched on some of these issues earlier with respect to the HSA, but just so people fully understand, the funds that are deposited are tax-free. Both the employer and the employee may contribute to the bank account, subject to annual limits. So for 2018, an individual can contribute if they have individual coverage, they can save up to $3,450 in this plan or $6,900 for family. If they're over 55, you can add another $1,000 to that. And as I mentioned, it is also possible for the employer to make contributions to this plan on behalf of the employees as well. Our proposal, our initial proposal, is solely for the employees to make contributions to this plan.
Mark?
Yes?
Just a quick question?
Yeah.
Is that a, that account can be there from now until retirement and they would have a fairly decent nest egg to help deal with potential medical issues as they age as well?
Yes.
It's almost like a deferred comp for medical needs.
Right. Right. Yes. As we mentioned, the funds in this account are invested in any growth or interest is tax-free. Any withdrawals used for qualifying medical expenses are tax-free. And then they can, you know, they can, employees can set up the direct pay of their health insurance cost out of the plan or out of the account. Any unused funds roll over from year to year. It's not subject to use it or lose it. And as I mentioned before, these accounts are owned by the employee, not the employer, and they're completely portable. And then, as I mentioned, in order to set up one of these accounts, you actually had to participate in an HSA qualifying medical plan, which is what our proposal was. So again, the IRS qualified medical plan plus the personal bank account equals the HSA plan and there's the trifecta of tax benefits to the employee, that the money deposited is pre-tax, the account fund, the growth is tax-free, and the use of the money is also tax-free.
Just another follow-up question. Employee leaves employment, that count has been initially set up, is that something that they can continue to contribute to as they go on?
Yes.
And potentially use or work with a new employer?
Well, I think their ability to, my understanding is, and this is where Aon might have been better to answer this question, but my understanding is that they could only contribute, only continue to contribute to that plan tax-free if they're also enrolled in.
HSA.
In an HSA eligible health insurance plan. So if they went to a new employer and that employer did not offer that kind of plan, they would not be able to continue to make tax-free contributions to that plan.
You say tax-free, you're talking federal and state?
Yes.
Which is even more important now since we just had a 32%. So you could say even more in the state of Illinois.
Right. Go ahead.
But you can roll it over if the company does have the HSA. You leave Will County, you can take it and bring it to the other one. But you can't go in and continue to put money in the following. If they don't have it.
Right. And it is still your money.
That's how it is now, but you don't know. With tax reform, they might say you could.
And or health insurance. This would be a really good piece to have in our new healthcare, I would say.
I think it's an option that will work for many people, maybe not all.
Just some other benefits with respect to this HSA plan. Like you mentioned, it's only available if you're enrolled in a IRS qualified plan. Use this to pay for eligible expenses, which include planned deductibles, co-insurance, dental or vision cost. The balance rolls over every year. It's portable. You can start or stop or adjust your contributions at any time. So if initially you start putting in, you know, a couple hundred bucks a month and you realize that, well, maybe my expenses are going to be higher or maybe my expenses aren't as high as I want, you can either raise or lower those contributions. You can spend now or save your HSA dollars for retirement and you only pay for the care you receive. You can save the rest for the future. With respect to the medical plan itself, it's like we mentioned, lower employee contributions. You can choose any doctor, but you save more if you go into a network provider because the actual health insurance plan that we're offering under the HSA is similar to the, with respect to the network and stuff, to the Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO that we currently offer. There's no copays, deductible, co-insurance, including prescription drugs. Covers free preventative care. Pay the full cost of medical and prescription drugs until you meet the deductible. And after you pay the deductible, the plan pays 80% of healthcare costs until you meet your out-of-pocket maximum and then the plan pays 100% after the out-of-pocket maximum is met. All right.
Does the $2,700 for family, $1,350 individually?
Is the deductible? What is the out-of-pocket maximum for a family?
It is, and actually, we got it right here. The out-of-pocket maximum for the family is 11.
$3,000.
Yeah, 3, $6,000 for family.
For families.
Right.
And $3,000 for individual?
Yes. Right. Because this slide up here actually has what the benefits are for the HSA plan.
Oh, thank you.
As we mentioned, the deductible for the individual is $1,350. The deductible for family is $2,700. The out-of-pocket maximum is $3,000 and $6,000. The number's on the right-hand column, that's if you go out of network. But again, the network is fairly extensive, so it's probably unlikely that employees would go out. But that's 5,625 and $11,250. The co-insurance for in-network is 80%. Then the physician care, office visits, the copay's 80%. Specialist copay's 80%. Preventative services are all covered by 100% unless you go out of network and they're not covered. Hospital services. Hospital services are covered at eighty percent, emergency services eighty percent, and prescription drugs at eighty percent. And again, all that is until you reach the out-of-pocket maximum.
Mark, I want to mention that the big difference here with the HSA is prescription drugs. They are part of the deductible, they are not a copay of the ten, twenty-five, forty-five that we're used to now. So your prescription drugs are like any other medical expense, you have to pay the full cost until you meet your deductible. I'm not sure if you could use both, but you could try.
All right. So that's the HSA plan that we proposed. The next, we have the, the PPO plan. And the, what's highlighted in yellow represents a change over the current plan. So under our proposal, and again, this is, we've got salary bands here also. Not only do employees pay different premium contributions based on their salary band, they also pay different deductibles under these plans based on their salary band. So when you see here, like, looking at the, the proposed changes in the PPO, let's look at the, look at the top with the deductible. Those that are making less than thirty thousand, their deductible for individual coverage would be five-fifty. Those in the thirty to fifty thousand range, their deductible for individual coverage would be six hundred. And those making over fifty thousand, their, their deductible for individual coverage would be six-fifty. And then each of those numbers is doubled for the family coverage. So again, there is a distinction made by the county so that those people that are making less are paying less towards the, the benefits and the, and the insurance. The out-of-pocket, like I said, we're proposing an increase there. So currently, the out-of-pocket for individual is two thousand. We're proposing that goes up to three. And for family, it's four thousand, we're proposing that goes up to eighty, or sixty thousand, I'm sorry, sixty thousand, or six thousand. Then you see, as I mentioned before, the co-insurance, we're proposing that that go from ninety percent to eighty percent. And that's also for the physician care, office visits as well, ninety percent to eighty percent. And for the hospital services, ninety percent to eighty percent. Emergency services, the change here is, there's a hundred-and-fifty-dollar copay, but then eighty percent of the benefits, or eighty percent of the cost covered as opposed to ninety. And you see the prescription drugs, we're proposing that it go for brand formulary, the copay go from twenty-five to forty-five, and for brand non-formulary, from forty-five to sixty-five. The other difference too is that the mail order ninety-day supply is two times retail. It goes up to two and a half times retail. With respect to the existing HMO, the changes that we're proposing here, we're not proposing any changes or increases in out-of-pocket maximum or on any of the, the copays. What we are proposing is with the hospital services, that the copay go from a hundred-and-twenty-five up to two-seventy-five. And then, I guess that's the, yeah, and then also for outpatient surgery from fifty to a hundred-and-fifty. And for outpatient hospital, from fifty to a hundred-and-fifty. With respect to emergency services, we're proposing that the copay go from a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-fifty. And then again, with the prescription drugs, we're proposing on the brand formulary from twenty-five to forty-five, and from the brand non-formulary, forty-five to sixty-five. Now, this one's kind of hard to read. But this is what it actually, based on the current projected increases in, in costs and premiums, what, under our proposal, how the premium contributions would change for each plan and in each salary band. So if you look at the, the top box that goes across, that's the PPO. And you look at the set of numbers on the left, that's what the employees are currently contributing to, currently paying each month with respect to their premiums for the PPO plan. So just to give you an idea, we already mentioned that it's a employee-only and they're making under thirty-one thousand. They're paying thirty-one dollars and nineteen cents a month. That goes all the way up, if they're a family making under thirty-one thousand, that's ninety-three-fifty-six. Someone, I think most of the ASME employees fall in the fifty-one thousand to seventy-seven thousand. So if you look at the impact on this bargaining unit, that's, that would be the column that would be most representative of how it's going to impact the ASME employees. So currently, someone making between fifty-one-five and seventy-seven thousand is paying just under a hundred dollars a month for employee-only coverage. And that goes up to two-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars a month for family coverage, for the PPO. If you go down to the bottom square with the HMO, again, looking at the third column over, that's the fifty-one thousand, five hundred to seventy-seven thousand. Currently, employees, employee-only in the HMO is paying sixty-seven-fifty-six. And for family coverage, it goes all the way up to two-oh-two-sixty-eight. So now, if you look at the middle box of numbers, under our proposal for, for 2018, as I mentioned, we were proposing that the aggregate premium contribution increase from ten percent per employee up to twenty percent. So based on that, the employee making between fifty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, if they stayed in the PPO plan for 2018 under our proposal, their cost would increase to a hundred-and-seventy, seventy-nine per month, which is an increase of just, was about seventy-three dollars and fifty-five cents per month under our proposal. With respect to the family coverage, their premiums would go up to fifty, or to five-hundred, twelve dollars and thirty-seven per month. So that would be an increase of two-hundred-and-twenty dollars and sixty-four cents per month if they were to stay in the PPO under our proposal at the twenty percent aggregate. With respect to the HMO, again, going up to the twenty percent aggregate, employees in the fifty-one thousand, five hundred to seventy-seven thousand dollar range, their premium contributions would go up from sixty-seven-fifty-six a month to one-forty-seventy-eight per month, or an increase of seventy, a little over seventy-three dollars. A family in that same category, the fifty-one thousand, five hundred to seventy-seven thousand, would go from four-hundred-and-twenty-two-thirty-five, or, I'm sorry, from two-oh-two-sixty-eight to four-twenty-two-thirty-five, so an increase of two-hundred-and-nineteen and sixty-seven. So again, that's going from the, it's taking into account the increased cost of the premiums next year because of the increase in health insurance costs in general, and moving the employees from an aggregate of ten percent premium contribution to twenty percent contribution. That would be the increases if they were to choose to stay in those plans. But then if you look at the HSA, and again, keeping in mind that we decided, because it's a, a lower-cost plan to the county and to the employees, to offer this at a ten percent aggregate premium contribution, those employee contributions, in some cases, actually, well, in every case, go down for the employee each month. So for instance, if you had an employee only, and that employee went from the PPO to the HSA, currently in the PPO, they're paying ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. If they were to switch to the HSA, that goes down to eighty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents a month.
Mark, and they stay in the PPO network, correct?
Right, they're staying, they don't have to change doctors or anything. It's the same network of doctors that they have under the PPO, but they do have the different benefits that we set out in the HSA account, or HSA qualified plan. For family coverage, they're currently paying, the average ASME employee is currently paying two-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and seventy-four cents for family coverage under the existing PPO per month. If they were to switch to the HSA, that would be two-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. So that would go down about thirty-five dollars a month for the employees if they were to switch from the PPO to the, the HSA. And the, there would also be, you know, the, if they were to switch from the HMO to the HSA, their costs would go up a little, but they're getting, you know, a broader network, network of doctors and, you know, different benefits. But I think the real switch is gonna be people going from the PPO to the HSA. Because even though there's a higher deductibles and there may be higher costs, which they can set money aside, you know, as we talked about in their savings accounts, on a monthly basis, as far as premium contributions across the board, they're gonna go down. And actually, that's, that's the extent of that.
So if you have some questions about the actual insurance plans, you can ask them. You know, we're not here to negotiate or talk about negotiation strategies. We are gonna go into executive session to talk about perhaps some parameters for negotiations. If you got some more, you have questions that are directly related to negotiation strategies, you can ask them in executive session. Mary, are you around here somewhere? You're over here. So Mary's gonna keep us on the straight and narrow path here about, you know, things we should do here in open session, and things we should do, shouldn't do. We don't wanna be, you know, it's a, it's a fine line whether you're, you know, if it's a violation of, of negotiations and unfair labor practices. So we're always very careful what we do publicly in relation to negotiations. So, right, Judy was first? Okay, Judy, you were first.
I was just wondering, I, I have friends whose kids have gone out of state for college, and their insurance didn't cover them. How does our insurance, if our kids go out of state for college, how?
They're covered now.
They're covered? Okay.
Yes.
Because I know some friends are on the Affordable Care Act, and they don't. They have to get different insurance for their kid out of state, so.
That is correct, for the Affordable Care Act.
Okay.
Changes are through the states, that's why. Our plan covers, Blue Cross have a nationwide network.
Okay, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, because a lot of people have kids that go out of state, and I just was wondering, so, thank you.
Okay, ready to, do you have something?
Yes, just specifically towards, when you talk about the plans going, family going from the PPO over to the HSA, I'm assuming that's going from the seventeen PPO into the eighteen HSA, what it would cost? Okay, we heard about the column fifty-one to seventy-seven. But I'm curious to know the representation from the insurance standpoint, how it affects individuals in the lower bracket or in the upper bracket? Do they all see a savings by switching over? Or is it just gonna be one portion, or one group that we're focusing on here in this?
Well, the, the employees in the lower, the lower salary band, if they went from the current PPO to the HSA, would see a slight increase in their, in their monthly premium.
So the lowest-paid people would see the increase, and the fifty-one to seventy-seven would see a decrease?
Right, and actually, and just to give you an idea of the increase they would see, currently, someone, you know, under the thirty, making under thirty-one thousand, with the family coverage under the existing PPO, that's ninety-three dollars and fifty-six cents. If they went to the HSA, we're anticipating that being around a hundred-and-fifteen and eighty-one. So it's an increase of about twelve dollars a month. For family coverage, it's an increase of about seven dollars a month for individual coverage.
Individual, okay, and then what about in the highest tax bracket, just out of curiosity?
For those over seventy-seven thousand, if they're currently in the PPO and they have family coverage, it would go from three-sixty-one-seventy-three down to three-oh-eight-eighty-two.
Okay, so let me ask you a question, and, and that's what I kind of thought, looking at the math. Doesn't this kind of defy what we tried to set up as the objective from, from a county standpoint, where the lesser-paid employees would pay less than the more employee, more, the higher-paid employees would pay more? Because it seems to me that when you're looking at that, and I'm not saying this right or wrong, I'm just asking, from our philosophy of what the county board has, has wanted to go through in the past, it just seems this plan, rolling it out, kind of defies what we've.
Well, let me say, I'm not so sure it was the philosophy of the county board. It's what we agreed it to in negotiations. But, you know, I, I could tell you, if you talk to the higher-paid employees, or the employees that are fifty-five and over, they think it's unfair to them. So, you know, to say the people who pay the most, you know, save, and those who pay the least may pay a little bit more, I think the principle is, is no different. The principle is, is that the lower-paid people are still paying a heck of a lot less than the higher-paid people. And just because there could be a slight increase to one band over another, doesn't mean that the concept still isn't fair. So, you know, to say that one band should go, go up no more than another, I don't think that's the philosophy.
So I'm, I'm not disagreeing with that, I was just making sure that they weren't given.
Sounds to me like that's what you are saying, though.
No, it's, it's not. What I'm making sure is that we didn't give the objective as that's what we were looking for, and then the plan came back to something different.
I think what we're looking for, what I think we're looking for is this. The same that we've been looking for, for the twenty-six years I've been dealing with insurance here at the county. When it comes to health insurance, in any of our insurance coverages, it's not that we don't think the costs are going to go up, but it's to slow the growth of those costs in a responsible way. So I'll try to contain cost, not lower cost, but try to contain cost while still giving our employees a high level of benefits. That's been our goal from the day I've been here. And I actually chaired the first insurance and personnel committee that the county ever formed, so. So that, that's the goal then, it's the goal now. It's to try to have a sustainable program that everyone benefits from. And, you know, there's not an unlimited amount of money. There's only so much the taxpayers can, can, can deep dig in their pocket for. So if you want to know what the overall goal is, that's what it is. And, and when I started, the employees paid a percentage of, of the premium, and there was no income bands. Everybody paid the same. So, you know, is there sensitivity to maybe the lower-paid workers in this county? Yeah, but I can tell you in, in, in the real world, you know, whether you worked in a refinery, or a factory, or whether you worked for IBM, you know what, employees paid the same regardless of what they make. You know, so what we've created here is a little unique. And I think it's even very unique amongst other counties. I am aware of no one who does a salary band. The argument is with the higher-paid employees is that we all get the same benefit. They don't get more of a benefit, therefore, everybody should pay the same. That's amongst the employees, we'll say that. So, you know, I, I've always thought we were on a, kind of a tough road, where we're trying to, you know, redistribute contributions into a plan that everybody gets the same benefit on. But that's what we, that's what we've done, that's what we've agreed to in our negotiations. I think that.
And just that point, even under the HSA, the employee making under thirty-one thousand for family coverage is gonna pay about two-hundred dollars less a month than the employee making over seventy-seven thousand. So a big difference between the, the cost of the insurance.
Yeah, and like I said, he, I think Jim thinks I'm looking at it from one, I understand it, and I agree. My, at my company, we do the same thing, everyone is the same amount, I have no problem with that. My issue is, when, when you started your presentation, you said, you know, this is how the county has done this. And I, I thought, that's why I just thought it was a little.
No, it's not the way we always done it.
Right, so I'd like to clarify too, that those numbers that were shown, those are illustrative. There's a lot of assumptions put into developing the plan. One of them is assuming that five percent of the population will move into the HSA the first year. So when you look at that, it's gonna be more of the higher-paid employees that move in there. And so when we want to keep the aggregate cost for the HSA at ten percent, those at the higher end of the pay scale are gonna actually be paying thirteen-point-four percent of the cost of the plan. While the lowest-paid employee, even though they see a slight increase in premium, they're only paying five percent of the cost of the plan. So, you know, that's how we have to spread it to get the aggregate at ten percent.
Beth, do you have a question?
I do. Just a question on behalf of the board members that aren't here. Are they able to get a copy of the proposed plan, or is it more confidential in nature?
Well, we, we put it up, we put it up, I suppose, Mary, we could distribute this now. Well, we put it up, we put it up, I suppose, Mary, we could distribute this now.
Whenever it's passed out at the table with ASME tickets.
We'll email it to everybody this afternoon.
Beth will email it to everyone, so. Actually, this was no big secret anyway, I mean, it's like.
You said it at the negotiations.
Yeah, so that's kind of public once it gets there. Mike, did you have?
Yeah, a couple things. And Ray, you're looking at HSA possible versus last year's PPO, there still is going to be a PPO, so we got to look at all of them in the act, you can't just pick one out and say it's going to cost somebody a couple dollars more for this, because it's a whole different kind of plan, which they benefit differently from. The one thing that I want to mention and about negotiations, but certainly not any numbers, so Mary doesn't get mad, and I've always talked about this number before, is the package. I mean, I would like to see somewhere in our negotiations where, for the individual bands or whatever, as we, you know, get closer to where we should be, that there is a number that, that band personnel sees that says, here's the package you're receiving. So maybe it's a thirty thousand dollar employee, but as far as their pay goes, but they're receiving a hundred thousand dollar package, and this goes to what Jim's speaking of. They're getting the same insurance, they may be getting what cost us twenty thousand dollars a year of insurance, that's the same as the person that's making seventy thousand dollars, that's getting the twenty thousand dollar worth of insurance coverage that we provide. And I really think we need to push that more to, so that, that individual, especially the lower-income individual, starts seeing that they're getting a heck of a deal in their band, and everything that comes underneath it, all the Bennys and all of that, then they can start comparing to some of their friends and ask about their package, and they're going to see how much better off they are.
Well, their benefits could be eighty, ninety percent of their salary.
Right, exactly, or more.
Or more, yeah.
I have a question for Bruce.
Yes.
Bruce, are we going to have that of, and Beth, you're absolutely correct when you were concerned about the other board members, because this is something hard for people to wrap their brains around. Are we going to be able to take my advice that we talked about a couple months ago about getting enrollment specialists in here, and not just talking about HSAs, but FSAs as well?
Yes, so we will definitely, we're working with ANQ, it's Communication Team.
Pardon?
ANQ, it's Communication Team.
Yeah.
They do this all the time. And we're putting together a communication program, benefit specialist to reach out, we'll set up meetings, and we definitely are going to incorporate FSA, because if you elect an HSA, you can only elect a special-use FSA. So, you know, otherwise, people have to understand what they can use it for, and as well as the regular, if they're going to stay in the PPO plan, they can still do the regular FSA.
But I know they changed it now that you can, because at one time you couldn't do both.
Right, correct.
So now you can do.
Now you can, but it's a limited-purpose FSA. It's for like vision, dental, some of the other things that aren't covered under the regular plan.
But we're going to have enrollment specialists coming in and be able to explain it a little bit more explicitly?
Oh, absolutely. And we'll have calculators for them to actually, here's your salary, here's what your premium is, here's what your last year's insurance out-of-pocket was, so that's.
You know, because we're just kind of like touching on this and everyone's looking, I'm looking at the eyes, like, so, you know, disclaimer, I mean, I sold this for years, so that's, but I'm looking over at faces, and people are looking at it like it's Greek, and it is very Greek, because it's very difficult, and we're looking at, you did great explaining, but you're looking at numbers.
Right.
And, and that, you're not situations, and how this is of putting in, if you have something, you see the doctor once a year, this is a great plan. If you have something that's coming up, you're having babies, whatever, this might necessarily not be for you, so there's a lot of other components of that.
That is correct, yeah, and it is very confusing, because you get to set aside these pre-tax dollars and, and.
And if you, yeah, so there's, there's a lot more with it, you were just kind of doing preliminary numbers, which that was your job today, so thank you.
So, any other questions, any comments you might have? Any other comment I would like to make, and we're going to go into executive session, and you can talk more specifically about things that deal with negotiations. The only other thing I want to mention is, is that, you know, this is a collaborative effort, you know, Bruce Tidwell works under the executive branch of government. When we ask for recommendations as a board, the executive branch, Bruce particularly, is the HR person, you know, we kind of give them some guidelines of, same thing, we're looking to contain the cost, the, we're looking to contain the growth of the cost as much as we can to make a sustainable program for everyone. So, then we have consultants, so, and then we go to our consultants, Bruce goes to our consultants, along with, with our labor negotiating team, and we talk about how do we meet the goals of a sustainable healthcare program? And they come back with recommendations, and these, they came back with a number of recommendations, basically under the same framework, show different percentages and so forth, but, but, so, well, this idea is that somehow this gets, this gets pulled out of the hat somewhere by somebody, that's not how it works, you know? These were the recommendations that came basically from the executive branch of government to, to the executive committee, which is the Insurance and Personnel Committee, to say, where do we, this is what we're going to start with in negotiations. So everyone has a clear understanding of that, you know? I will say that, you know, the board takes the brunt of the grief in these types of things, but I try to put the brunt of the grief on Mark.
Why you pay me?
Yeah, so he is paid for. So, 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 just so you, so you have an understanding how this stuff kind of comes down. So Bruce, I don't know if you'd have anything to add to that, but.
No, that is correct, I mean, we are a self-insured plan, and so when we employ our consultants and experts, they have actuaries that run our actual, you know, experience through their models, and that's how we come up with these numbers, they're not just pulled out of a hat.
So, so if there's no other questions, I'm, I'm motioning on executive session.
You want to do a discussion on the tax rate freeze?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I got another thing, before we do that. Discussion of tax rate freeze. Mike, I'm going to put this over to you since you kind of brought it up, so.
All right, we had talked about the last second.
Herbie wanted a discussion.
About freezing the tax rate, but I've got even better news than that. It looks like based on the preliminary numbers we now have, we'll be able to drop the tax rate. Now, right now, it looks like at least one and a half percent over last year, that's based on taking all of the budget work that everybody's done and all of the assessed valuation, all of those things coming together, it looks like we're going to be able to drop the rate. So hopefully, that will be the, the minimum that we'll be able to drop, at one and a half percent, give us a rate at about six-point-oh-five-eight, and hopefully, we can push it down from there. We still have a few things to come in yet, but that's kind of where we're at right now, so better than a freeze, we're going down.
And, and this is on, on the agenda of Mr. Brooks' ass, whether we have a discussion, it's kind of me, it's a time to have a discussion, since it's a community of the whole and everybody can be here, so I'm just going to kind of open it up, if there's any comments or further discussion, Mr. Brooks?
And thank you so much for that, Chairman Frisalone, because as, I first heard it for the first time last Thursday, they passed the budget last Thursday, so a week later, having had a whole lot of time to go through all the hundreds of pages of the budget, but there was a couple things that I wanted to point out, when we had talked about a tax freeze, I, nobody wants a tax freeze, but I do feel.
Tax rate.
I mean, a tax rate increase, but I do feel better now that you, we dropped it. But a couple things I wanted to point out, there is some reform in that budget, you are aware of that.
State.
State reform.
Talk about state, I was talking just about our county tax.
Correct, correct.
I can't control what they do.
No, no, I, I.
I would have done a thirty-two percent.
Right, right, no, no, I, no, 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 and I, let them, that's why they get the big bucks of State of Illinois Springfield, but it's not, that's not, but, but, but some of the things that I did look at in the budget, and one of our state senators, Sue Resin, did put out a report, that I did copy it, and anybody got this, but it does talks about what's contained in it, and how it does affect our residents of Will County, and that's what I was concerned about.
Oh, okay.
And those things that they did talk about is that with the new revenue, we are able to get Will County road construction back to work with that budget, we, we were able to get, stop the standard poor from putting the State of Illinois in a junk bond status, and that was some good news. But there was a lot of other things in there, but since we removed it from the freeze, that probably not pertinent now, but there are, if you take a look at the budget, there is a lot of things in that budget that does, I think will be beneficial to us here at Will County.
But there are some things I'm still concerned about, there's talk of a.
As am I.
Of a two percent surcharge on the tax, and we pay sales taxes, there's some things that could still.
Oh, yes, yes.
Hurt us a little bit, and, and still that, while they've said that the LD funds, the local distributor fund is going to be safe, it isn't a hundred percent yet, so that still could affect us a little bit.
Okay.
But the key for us is, you know, and obviously, it depends on what your house is worth, but if our tax rate goes down, potentially, our residents save dollars.
Correct.
And certainly only on the county tax portion, but we can only do our part, because that's our job.
Right, right. Out of the two counties, we're concerned about Will.
That's right.
And that's what, so, yeah, thank you.
Just had one question, just so I'm clear, when we talk about tax rate freeze, we're talking about property tax rate, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Now, you had Mary stand up previously, I didn't know if you wanted her to still say something before you went into executive. Mary, take your.
No.
Before, in regards to the negotiations and going into executive session.
Yeah, I'll get to that, we'll hear in a second. Okay, anything else about the tax, about the tax rate, and the fact that Will County, this is an culmination of us just being, doing good work and watching our budget and dollars, by the way. So, we're going, I'm going to have anything on executive session for the purpose of negotiations, and Mary, you had some.
Pending litigation.
And pending litigation?
Yeah, if you, I can do pending litigation here or at executive committee, but as long as we're.
Yeah, we'll do it here, and pending litigation, so I'll let her, we got a motion?
Second.
Second, take the roll, please.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yeah.
Bocella.
Yes.
Bryce.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Fritz.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Militello.
Yes.
Valich.
Yes.
Frisalone.
Mike.
Winfrey.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Steely Ferry.
Yes.
Dollinger.
Yes.
Markham.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Tumanello.
Yes.
Weigel.
Yes.
Ferry.
Yes.
And Chorlitis and Moustus. You're in.